Good evening, welcome to Lebanon City Council, November twelfth, twenty twenty five. Mr. Berkeley, call roll.
Mayor Messer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Here.
Mr. Sellers.
Here.
Mrs. Harper.
Here.
Mr. Lammerow. Mrs. Eggers.
Here.
Mr. Coe.
Here.
Permission to excuse Mr. Lammerow?
Sub move.
All paper?
Need a second?
Second.
Thank you. All set?
Very good. Please do the invocation in person.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this moment where we can come together, do the business of the city. I ask that your Holy Spirits give us guidance as we make decisions and we will act in a manner that reflects you. In your son's name I pray, amen.
For the citizens to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Look at consideration of council meeting minutes, October fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Do have a motion to adopt these.
Sub move.
Second. Any comments here? Please call a roll.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes. We have Mr. Brandon with us tonight and we will be reading our proclamation for World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day. If you'd like to come to the podium, introduce yourself and kind of give your story, I think that'd be great.
Since I'm nervous speaking in front of crowds, I'll keep it as cool.
Well, it's a good thing there is no crowd.
My name's Mike Brandon. I've lived in Lebanon now, I think, for twelve years. First of all, let me thank you all for doing this tonight.
Yeah.
The council and the mayor. Every year I've been, lived here, I've had this done, either November being pancreatic cancer month or third Thursday of the month being World Pancreatic Cancer Day. My wife passed away from pancreatic cancer in two thousand and ten. So I got involved with affiliate in Cincinnati. Done a lot of things with it over the years, but after fifteen years, you start wearing out a little bit. But anyway, I want to thank you again, not for myself only, but from the Cincinnati Pancreatic Cancer affiliate. Pancreatic cancer is so deadly because it's not noticeable most time. It's not diagnosed in time by doctors, so by the time it's found out, it's stage four. Are they survivors of stage four? Yes. Are the people that die from it from stage one? Yes, my wife was one. We thought we'd beat it, but unfortunately it came back about a year and a half later and she passed away. But I want to thank the city, you guys and everything for being so kind to me the years I've lived here and doing this every year for me.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and we already took our pictures, so.
I.
We already took our pictures, so I'll just present it to you.
Cool. I got pictures every year.
Exactly right. You got a whole collage here. Whereas in twenty twenty six, an estimated sixty-four thousand people in the United States will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer and fifty-five thousand six hundred and eighty will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and is currently the third leading cause of cancer death in the United States. Every, every, every year that line gets up.
The number goes up, also the deaths go up.
Yeah.
Thirteen percent, twelve, thirteen percent survival rate right now. When my wife passed away, it was four, so we have progress, but I'm scared, afraid. Up through all the cuts and research and stuff, that number's either gonna drop a little bit or it's not gonna advance anymore right now for a few years.
And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in just around thirteen percent. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cancer or cause of cancer-related death across the world. Whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Lebanon, Ohio are enhanced as a direct result of the increased awareness about the symptoms and risk factors of pancreatic cancer. Now therefore I, now therefore I, Mark Messer, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Lebanon in the state of Ohio, do hereby proclaim November twentieth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five as World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day in the city of Lebanon. So thank you for joining us and thank you for your long suffering and all the work you've done.
Thank you. We'll see you next year.
We'll see you next year.
A purple scarf, that had to be hard to find.
I've got a lot of purples. I used to have Kentucky blue everything, I've got purple.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Around town, so I've been calling purple Mike.
Oh, that's funny.
Don't worry about purple.
Yeah.
I'd be okay with purple Mike.
Thanks, Jim, and great Christmas.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you. Moving on to new business, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one zero five.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero, one zero five, excuse me. Authorizing. Authorizing transfers and reimbursements included in the twenty twenty-six operating budget.
This ordinance approves the airfront transfers and reimbursements that are incorporated into the two thousand twenty-six operating budget.
Have a motion for first read?
Sub move.
Second.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero, one zero six.
You caught it.
I, yes.
I don't get you. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one zero six, approving the expenditures incorporated into the two thousand twenty-six operating budget.
This ordinance will approve the two thousand twenty-six city of Lebanon operating budget, which includes total revenues of one hundred thirty-three point nine million and total expenditures of one hundred thirty-seven point two million and authorizes expenditures that are incorporated into the budget. The mayor do have some slides for the public that have previously been presented to the city council. So just to kind of go through the budget calendar and the process up to this point, this budget was originally presented to city council for review back on October seventh and has been kind of the discussion topic on the last few work sessions. Tonight will be the first reading of the legislation adopting the budget and then city council will formally vote on it at the November twenty-fifth meeting. So obviously we go into each budget cycle with certain essential goals, a pretty consistent year of the year. You know, first and foremost, just making sure that the budget resources, the programs and policy initiatives that were consistent with council's two thousand twenty-six goals and objectives that were actually adopted back in the summer of this year. Sustaining adequate cash reserves in the general fund, capital improvement fund and general obligation bond fund are critical. City council has an adopted fiscal policy that we adhere to. Road improvements continue to be a significant portion of the budget and a big investment for the city. So this year's budget includes an investment of eleven point one million dollars in roadway improvements. The budget does include the execution of capital projects that are included in the five-year capital improvement plan the council also adopted earlier this year. That includes our annual resurfacing program, reconstruction of Suncrest and Meadow Lane, Cedar Lane reconstruction, work on Mason Moore Millbrook Road, and Carson Drive improvements, as well as funding for a splash park. We continue to minimize the city's overall debt obligations, so this budget does not issue any new debt for the city. Public safety, we did include in the budget, beginning the engineering for a new police station. That's been a goal of the cities for a number of years. Quality of life initiatives, we are looking to extend kind of where the multi-use path on Monroe Road currently ends around Colonial Park North out to, along Monroe Road out to Broadway. Did mention the budget includes splash park funding. Our economic development initiatives continue to be supported in this year's budget. The small business renovation grant programs, the facade improvement programs have been very successful and those will continue. And then the budget does incorporate both some expenses and revenue associated with, you know, the city's effort to purchase the fairgrounds property and kind of take over the maintenance and operational responsibilities for the facilities out there. So a total of two hundred fifty thousand dollars has been included in the budget for electric system upgrades out of the fairgrounds and then another three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars has been incorporated into the budget for miscellaneous property improvements that we expect to be identified as part of the master plan process that is currently underway for the fairgrounds. So as I said, total revenues of one hundred thirty-four point three million, total expenditures of almost one hundred thirty-seven million dollars. So our budget continues to grow, a lot of that's being driven by our utility funds. Always want to explain why expenditures exceed revenues. There was a couple of capital projects that we knew we would be executing next year that we have been kind of saving and building up cash reserves to be able to support. One of those is the replacement of Railroad Bridge two point one oh. That's the bridge, it's kind of at the dead end of Clay Street. The city has been setting aside money being generated and paid by the railroad for this anticipated expense and ready to execute next year. And then we are doing some additional road improvements next year that because of the health of the cash fund balance and the capital improvement fund, we're able to execute them and still maintain a healthy cash reserve balance. I do like to point out again, out of this, you know, one hundred thirty-six, one hundred thirty-seven million dollar budget, a significant portion of it are what we call restricted funds, utility funds. Those are enterprise funds where the money, the revenue can only be used to support that specific use. Obviously, the fire fund, the street fund have restrictions on how that money can be used. You know, we tend to focus a lot on the income tax-supported funds, which are the general obligation fund, which supports any debt obligations that the city has, nonutility debt obligations. The capital improvement fund, which really supports our road program and facility improvement projects. And then the general fund, so that's what funds the police, the parks, kind of the general administrative services. So highlight the next year's road improvement project. As I said, there's going to be an investment of a little over eleven million dollars in our roadway infrastructure. You can see the projects highlighted there. These costs include utility costs, so the eleven million dollars is just the actual kind of road, pavement, concrete, those expenses. It does not include the utilities expenses, those are funded in a separate enterprise fund. But Meadow Lane and Suncrest will be reconstructed and a significant amount of the utilities will also be replaced. That cost estimate's around three million. Cedar Lane, same, same story, roadway and utility replacement at a cost of one point four million. Our annual paving and concrete program, so that is what's really kind of been beefed up next year. We're looking at an investment of seven million dollars. Carson Drive and that subdivision is going to be kind of a primary location where we do those improvements, but there are various locations throughout, throughout town. And then we are widening and doing some improvements on Mason Moore Millbrook Road as well. So to support this, we are directing an additional nine hundred thousand dollars from the general fund into the capital improvement fund to support the project, program next year. Just to give you a snapshot of how the city's been investing our tax dollars in our roadway infrastructure. You can see over the last few years and as we look forward, you know, we are investing in excess of ten million dollars a year in our roads. Kind of going back to, you know, say ten years ago in two thousand fifteen-ish, you know, that number was around three million dollars. So a significant increase in investment, it has been a focus area for the city now for a number of years. Couple of miscellaneous projects that I want to highlight. We are moving into the rideaway acquisition phase for the widening of State Route sixty-three. Construction of that will not happen until two thousand twenty-seven, but the plans are moving along and we are beginning the process of acquiring the rideaway to support a three-lane road section. We are looking at doing some improvements to Miller Park, expansion of the parking area and then kind of a Boulder and Clay area. We mentioned the splash, splash park, we've included funding for that project in the budget. We're still working through the exact location on that, but wanted to kind of get in the budget as a placeholder for now. We're investing a hundred thousand dollars in small business economic development incentives. We mentioned the fairgrounds property investment. We're spending about one and a half million dollars replacing old water mains in our community. And then we do continue to fund what we call reserve funds. So every year we set aside money into these reserve funds. We have a trail reserve fund, a parks reserve fund, fire apparatus reserve fund, knowing that at some point we're going to have to spend money on, you know, maintenance activities or buying a new fire truck. So those reserve funds, which are really kind of separate savings accounts for each of those items, are fully funded. And it does include one and a half million dollars in grant support. So kind of focusing on the income tax-generated funds and just kind of give you a picture of, you know, financially how they're looking for next year. You can see in the general fund, total revenues of twenty-two point six eight million and total expenses of twenty-two point four million dollars. So revenues do exceed expenses in the general fund. The Geo Bond Fund, total revenues of seven hundred twenty-four thousand and expenses of a little over one hundred forty thousand. So the Geo Bond Fund, that's the fund that supports debt service obligations from the city. And you can see there's a pretty big gap between revenues and expenses. We have intentionally kind of been building that gap, knowing that at some point in the future we will need to issue debt to build a new police station and want to be able to make sure that we can support that within our current, you know, funding, funding system. And then the capital improvement fund, so that is where expenses exceed revenues. Again, we're working, using some of our cash reserves to enhance next year's program and make those investments in our infrastructure. Staff wages and health insurance, so one and a half percent performance increase allocation and a one and a half percent cost of living increase allocation for staff. We are increasing the employee insurance contribution by one percent, just based on kind of where our claims are trending. This is a, this is an important slide because this really drives a lot of, you know, how we, you know, put together, put together the budget and decisions that are made associated with that. So we want to make sure we're aligned with city council's policy directive on maintaining out of the cash reserves in the general fund. You can see this budget projects an end-of-year cash balance in the general fund of ten million dollars. That equates to about a five-month operating reserve. The fiscal policy is anywhere from three to six months operating reserve. So we're well within that fiscal policy with regards to our general fund cash balances. And you can see that that really continues out into two thousand and thirty. Geo Bond Cash Fund, you can see this year we're showing debt in the cash reserves. That's based on the assumption that we will be executing the purchase of the fairgrounds property and we plan on using some of the cash reserves in the Geo Bond Fund to help support that. But then next year it bounces back up and then you can see where we kind of project issuing debt for the future police station, that that cash reserve balance still stays real consistent at about three million dollars. And then the capital improvement fund, cash balances, this is all over the map and this really has to do with grant timing. So we have to encumber construction projects on the front end, most grants are reimbursing. But we try to kind of keep that cash reserve balance in the one and a half to two million dollar range every year. Utility rates, the budget includes a two percent water and sewer rate increase. There are no electric rate increases being proposed. And then the sanitation rates are per ordinance, so we just rebid our refuse and recycling collection contract with Rumpke. There are some cost increases coming to the city on that. So we are proposing to make some adjustments on our sanitation rates to reflect our increases in expenses. And no change in the stormwater charge. So again, just kind of going through the city council goals checklist. We are aligned with a five-month operating reserve, which is within what the fiscal policy calls for. In terms of pursuing grant opportunities, the budget includes one and a half million dollars in grant revenue. These are grants that we've already secured, these aren't grants that we've applied for, but these are grants that we've secured. All of the two thousand twenty-six projects identified in the five-year capital improvement program are being executed for next year. We talked about continuing to fund our small business incentive programs, which we've done. Funding of the replacement savings, which we continue to do. And then the quality of life initiatives that a lot of times, you know, mainly center around the parks. Eleven million dollar investment in our roads. To accomplish that, we're taking additional revenue in the general fund and directing it into essentially into pavement. And then we are looking forward to beginning the design of a new police station. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any comments on the slide presentation?
I do.
Yes, sir.
The, you know, when you, at, well, at reelection, you get a lot of people ask questions. One of them is, you know, growth and those type of things. And, and honestly, I'm proud to see where, how we've managed and what this budget means. You know, I hate seeing where, you know, we gotta charge two percent for some additional fees, but just happened to see a report. So through September, the annual rate of inflation for the country is three percent. Next year it's going to be anywhere between half and three percent. So to see that we're at two percent, I think, I want the public to know, you know, that's good, that's because of good stewardship on our part. I'm going to put you on the spot. And so the, the water main, I know we've been really trying to replace water main and, and I don't know if you have a feel for what that percentage is, because I know it's like, you know, it's a constant moving thing. But, you know, the public needs to understand the amount of cost that is incurred when we do that. Do you have any range of what?
Yeah, I mean, we, we've been investing at least a million dollars a year in replacing water mains for well over a decade now. So, I mean, I can tell you the, you know, the number of water main breaks and the amount of water loss that our system occurs has reduced greatly. And water loss is important because we're, we're buying our water from Sisney Water Works. So, you know, if we have a water main leak and, and, you know, we're paying for that. So, you know, I think we're always going to have a water main replacement program, you know, we're all. But instead of, you know, I don't know, getting out there and replacing water mains that were built pre nineteen fifty, we're starting to get into, you know, replacing the water mains in the sixties and seventies.
Which is good.
So I think that's kind of how I gauge it is. We've got a couple decades and then we're getting to in terms of replacing the water mains. So that's definitely good news. I can tell you some communities are struggling with, I mean, the EPA has mandates in terms of lead services and dealing with, you know, lead pipes in their water distribution system. And we finished dealing with that years ago. So, you know, I feel like we're ahead of the curve with regards to that.
I'm always impressed with the way our, our utility department and how forward-thinking we are. The, you know, I just pointed out the quality of life things, you know, we've done, you know, recently the pavilion, the skateboard park and to see, you know, to be able to highlight the quality of life things that the city's doing. Which is part of, you know, our basic services are fire, police, you know, the utilities and roads. But also being a city where we can provide amenities, because I've been on a kick looking at, and sorry monologue, but a kick looking at the state of Ohio. So state of Ohio overall is in a population decline, but right now there's fourteen counties that are growing and we're blessed that Warren County is one of them. that are growing, and we're blessed that Warren County is one of them. And is projected to do so, I think Ohio.gov, the report I was looking at, was like through 2030. But, and even, even projected to grow while the rest of the state. I mean, you're talking about 88 counties, you know, 14 are growing, and we've got one of the stronger growths. So, you know, the, the things that were talked about, you know, when you work at a pole for 12 hours and you're confronted, you know, you had people, you know, you put yourself out there, people come up and ask you questions, and it was mostly about, still concerned about growth and, which I know we don't talk about a lot, but we're in a blessed position. I'm trying to do a study on the number of cities that are in the 20,000 to 25,000 range, because we're, you know, 2023, and to see what their budgets look like, because I would not like to be in that kind of position where you've got declining population and you're struggling, still trying to maintain sewer systems and sanitary. For us to be putting 11 million dollars in roads, I just, it's amazing amount that we've really improved what we've done here, so.
I want to just point out along those lines, you know, you mentioned the increases, flat electric rates. I don't know how many other different places could say that their electric rates are flat at this point, and I don't have anything to do with that, but Scott and Sean are managing that. The solar project has been better than we expected funding initially. Certainly hoping that natural gas units that we're putting in are going to help as well. So that's, I'm not patting myself on the back, because I don't have anything to do with it, but that's a management win, because the cost of power is not beautiful yet. The fact that we were able to manage that down is pretty impressive.
Mr. Brinko? Regarding that road improvement fund, it's 11 million now, and we saw the chart, it keeps going up. Do you foresee what year it might be where it might start to level out?
Yeah, I know the, the five-year capital improvement plan really carries out that trend, you know, in the, I'm going to call it the nine to 11 million range for the next five years. And a lot of that's grant-driven, so we've, you know, we were successful in getting, I think it's a $5.7 million grant to help support the widening of 63. So that's a big project that's, you know, going to move forward. We've applied for some big grants to do intersection improvements at Columbus Avenue and Miller Road, out at bypass 48 Main Street. So certainly if those, if we're successful with those grants, that level, that road's going to continue for the next five years.
Thank you.
Motion for first read? Some move? Order number 2025-107.
Order is 2025-107, authorizing the city manager to keep new or renewal agreements with financial institutions for positive value funds and declaring emergency.
This ordinance authorizes the city manager to execute new or renewal agreements with various banks for the deposit of active funds for Ohio Civil Code Section 135.01 and Section 7.03 of the City Eleven Charter. This replaces the current legislation that expired in June of 2026.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Please go roll.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Order number 2025-108.
Order is 2025-108, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Dahl Lehman Limited for $348,500 for the construction of the wastewater treatment plant, aeration improvements, and declaring emergency.
This ordinance approves a contract with Dahl Lehman Limited to replace the existing traveling bridge aeration system at the wastewater treatment plant with a fixed grid system due to the existing equipment reaching the end of its useful life.
Motion to adopt? Some move? Second. Any comments? Please go roll.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Order number 2025-109.
Order number 2025-109, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with L.C. United Painting Company Incorporated for $175,000 for the interior maintenance and repainting of South Water Tower Number One and declaring emergency.
This ordinance authorizes a contract with L.C. United Painting Company to blast clean and repaint the inside of South Water Tower Number One based on a routine maintenance inspection indicating the need for repairs.
Motion to adopt? Some move?
Second.
Any comments? Please go roll.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Order number 2025-110.
Order number 2025-110, authorizing the city manager to execute a five-year contract with Runkie of Ohio Incorporated for refuse and recycling collection services.
This ordinance approves a five-year contract with Runkie of Ohio for citywide refuse and recycling collection services to residents and businesses, including servicing multiple city facilities. So we do these contracts of five-year increments. Runkie established the current contract pricing five years ago. Obviously, we had high periods of inflation during that five-year period. So the city's cost from Runkie for year one, starting next year, increased significantly, and then it kind of levels out from there. So we'll talk a little bit about what impact it had on the rates in the next ordinance.
Yep. Motion for first read?
Some move?
Second.
Order number 2025-111.
Order number 2025-111, amending Chapter 917 of the classified ordinances relating to garbage and rubbish rates.
This ordinance allows for a rate adjustment to the refuse and recycling collection rates to reflect the city's increase in refuse and recycling collection costs per the competitively bid contract unit pricing. Under this collection rate schedule, the city's sanitation fund will operate at a deficit in years 2026 and 2027, as we take advantage of a healthy fund balance to smooth out the rate increases passed on to our customers that are being triggered by the Runkie increase in service costs.
Motion for first read?
Some move?
Second.
So just to clarify, we're taking our account balance and we're using that against the rate increases to slowly ramp up to where Runkie's going to be at.
Yep.
Anything else? Order number 2025-112.
Order number 2025-112, amending Section 911.02 of the classified ordinances, authorizing a 2% water rate increase as incorporated into the 2026 operating budget.
This ordinance allows for a 2% adjustment to the water consumption rates to ensure the sustainability of the water distribution system and compliance with the enterprise upon covenants, and also as recommended by the update of 2021 Water and Sewer Rate Study.
Motion for first read?
Some move?
Second. Order number 2025-113.
Order number 2025-113, amending Section 913.03 of the classified ordinances, approving a 2% sanitary sewer rate increase as incorporated in the 2026 operating budget.
This ordinance allows for a 2% adjustment to the sewer consumption rates to ensure the sustainability of the sanitary collection and treatment system, and as recommended by the update of 2021 Water and Sewer Rate Study.
Motion for first read?
Some move?
Second.
Resolution 2025-114.
Resolution 2025-114, approving a seven-year lease agreement with K&amp;D Alexander Commercial Properties and LLC for the right-of-way bumpout located in 105 East Mulberry Street to support the outdoor dining area for Greenhouse Cafe.
This resolution allows Greenhouse Cafe to maintain and operate an outdoor customer dining area under certain conditions within the city public right-of-way and in front of their business for a seven-year period.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Any comments? Please go roll.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Number 11, final resolution 2025-115.
Resolution 2025-115, authorizing the city manager to enter an agreement with Warren County Commissioners for reimbursement of the 2026 public defender fees.
This resolution approves an annual agreement with Warren County that outlines the fee-scheduled reimbursement for indigent defense services in Lebanon Municipal Court.
Dan, did you want to make any comments on that or?
Sure, it's just, so we do this every year, and it's an agreement we have with the county to reimburse a portion of the costs that's related to the public defender fees in our municipal court, unless it's right here. Assuming it's indigent typically, we're in our court system for.
There's a, there's a, the county has an account, they reimburse you some of it from the state, and some of it, you know, some of that money moves through the court, so there are several moving pieces to it. We don't pay for all of it.
Right, yes. This would be, since it's an opportunity to mention an unfunded state mandate, that would be nice for the legislature to address, but I'll leave it at that.
A little focus content.
My legal advice would be don't hold your breath.
Motion to adopt?
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
City Mayor, your fork.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The next meeting of City Council is a work session on Monday, November 17th at 7:00 P.M. I'm sure most folks have noticed the North Broadway improvement project is continuing and progressing. They're working on the concrete work on the east side of North Broadway, which, once complete, will allow for a paving to begin next week. So that's kind of the light at the end of the tunnel. They'll still be putting new pavement down starting next week. That'll, that will be a multi-week process, but appreciate everybody's patience during the project. That project, all in, I think, six and a half million dollars, something like that, so a significant project. I want to let Council know we do have the closing scheduled for the purchase of property at 114 South Broadway scheduled for next Wednesday, so that's, that's, the legal work has been completed on that. And then the city is in the midst of our leaf collection season, so encourage folks, if you want to kind of see one of your streets on the plan for leaf collection, you can go to the city's website, go to the Public Works Department page, there's a nice map that kind of shows what our, what our schedule is. That's all I have.
Mr. Sellers, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, at some point, I'm, you know, would like to speak a little bit on the budget, but I'll do that usually when we actually vote on and do a formal vote. Just thank you again for staff for putting together a thoughtful and responsible budget. This is our first televised meeting since the election, so, you know, just wanted to thank the citizens for reaffirming our conservative values. You know, our opponent at, at one point had mentioned that we had run on certain labels as if it was a bad thing. And, you know, we looked at it as the opposite. We're proud of who we are, those labels are who we are, and we weren't going to, I feel like that's what's wrong with politics, is people try to get elected and hide who they are. We ran on who we are, we weren't going to hide on, hide on that. We were willing to lose, win or lose standing on those principles. So we were going to legislate on our Christian conservative principles, and the city once again spoke, they spoke quite loudly again, that this is how they want their city run, and this is the type of community we are, and they are very proud of it, and I am humbly, very humbly, and ready to serve a second term and honored. I truly, several members of council have mentioned it in the past, I truly believe that this is the greatest community in America, and to be able to serve that, when you put it in that perspective, pretty humbling and a great honor. So thank you to the citizens out there. That's all I got.
Vice Mayor Norris?
I'm going to bounce off that a bit too. It was a huge thank you to the community for this election season. I too am very honored, extremely honored, that people that know of me and may not even know me, but did vote for what I stood for and what we all stood for. It's an honor to be reelected with the three that were very grateful for that time. I plan to continue to carry on my goals from four years ago, was, carry them on into these next four years and add, add more. One of my projects I'm excited, very excited about is the Fairgrounds potential. I definitely wanted to run primarily to, just to be able to sit and see where that goes and have some safe-stone input on that, and welcome any, anybody that would like to call me or text me or email me with any thoughts that they may have. But it's with, it's with huge appreciation that I was elected again, and I want everybody to know that. On a community note, just, I'll be talking about this for the next couple of times, but on December 6th and 20th, the museum on 11 to 5 will be opened up in their town square, will be coming alive with real characters and things you can purchase and things that will be given away. So it's just another way to use an entity that is such a great, a great fixture in our community, they're giving back by opening up and turning, turning their, their town square into a live town square with, with majority volunteer work and help. So please support that. It's, it does have a small fee, but it includes a lot of stuff. So any, any money that you go, that goes into that museum is spent well to run and operate, operate that. I've had my mom's memorial service Saturday at Scripps Coffee, and it was a great day. My mom didn't want a big funeral or any type of pageantry, so we waited until she was well into heaven and probably wasn't paying attention, and we, we did a, we gave her a party. And we had four generations of cousins there. We had almost my entire family, my nephew unfortunately couldn't make it from Texas, his flight was, was going, probably going to be canceled, so he, he wasn't even coming. But what I saw on, on top of that, just as a side note, was when we think about, people ask, why do we do this and why do we do that? Why do we have bike trails? Why are we putting all this money into, someone even was complaining about a park that we were preparing to enlarge. And, and I know those are small and far between, the majority of people that I talked to are very excited about our capital improvements and things that we do going above and over fire, police, roads, security, infrastructure. We, Lebanon spends and has the leadership who has the excitement and the foresight to, to do many things in Lebanon where you literally can just stay here and ride your bike, take great walks in town. I've said it many times, the Colonial Park is just a majestic place, that we have acres of woodlands in the center of our town that a lot of people don't even know exists. But I took my cousins from Alabama around and showed them some of the buildings that I've restored, and we walked downtown and spent a fortune at the popcorn place and ate it all. But, you know, when I look at Scripps provided the building, we spent a fair sum downtown in our merchants. Kelly's did our, did our catering, and the only thing we didn't spend here in Lebanon was the hotel. And we went down to Kirkwood, but I added it up to, it was actually thousands of dollars, just our little gathering, one day brought into Lebanon, because Lebanon offers all of those things to us to be able to provide a great weekend reunion gathering. And I think how, as we bring more things in, it's not just the Golden Lamb, it's not just this, it's multiple things. You literally run out of time before you run out of things to do. And I was so proud of Lebanon and my cousins, who come from a small towns in Alabama, they loved Lebanon, they were, they were very complimentary to everything that was happening here. Comments were made about the shops, how almost every shop has someone in it, there's very little vacancy. I do, I did, I don't as much now, but I did a lot of driving in small towns throughout Ohio with the job that I had, and laws, a lot of small towns are just not. and laws, a lot of small towns are just not, they're part of that other, you said 14, they're the other part. You can just see the empty storefronts and they're trying, but it's, Lebanon is alive and it just excites me and then that, that took some of the happy sadness that I had over my mom, just the election, being elected, that I get to be in leadership of this great community and I'm just so honored and so happy for that and a huge thank you.
Yeah, the, the, I am, I'm humbled and honored to be re-elected. I do look at it as a blessing to serve the city, once again, I just believe it's such a great city and as I just look at and kind of research empirically evidence of what else is going around, around in the state and we're just, we're just very fortunate and blessed. I do want to, I know you guys probably just didn't think of it, but you know, with Veterans Day, you know, thanking our veterans and you know, I have, I have my niece, I'll shout out whenever I can, and she's a service warfare officer now serving over in, in Japan. So just proud of her and the respect that we, and honor that we owe our veterans. I want everyone to really also think about is Thanksgiving's coming up, you know, with the government shutdown, SNAP programs, there are, there are people who, it's, it are impacted and it's going to take a while, so you know, people, people just need to have their radars up, their antennas up, friends and family to make sure they don't, if they see somebody struggling to open the wall, take a hand, to step in and to help. And probably this, maybe the third or fourth thing that was talked about, people mentioned to me the most was our, our leaf schedule. Our pickup, I was like, because leaves seem to hang on there and then our pickup was kind of late and missed a lot and I live in a pretty leafy area, so.
At the end of the day, if we need to get your leaves, call us.
Well, I mean, yeah, maybe let the public know that if, if something, if, yeah, if there's a street that's really struggling now. And so that was, that was a little funny, but, yeah, it, it is a blessing to be able to serve the city and very thankful. Thankful to be able to serve a lot of you guys, because this is, you know, there's, we saw some of, we're calling neighboring communities out, but there's some dumpster fires, some times going on and I'm just, I'm just so thankful of where we are.
I also want to just say congratulations to all of you and Brad who's not with us. It was a great day, I always loved being out there and supporting people that I think do a great job and that I'm, I'm happy to support and I'm very, very happy that you all are still here to serve with us. As always, it's a really good opportunity to talk to residents, but what I hear a lot is, ah, I really should come to a meeting, ah, I really should come to a meeting. I said, please do, we want to hear from you, come to a meeting, call us, you know, email, whatever, we do want to hear from you because otherwise, you know, sometimes there's decisions that we're making and we're, you know, we kind of guess a little bit, well, I think this is what people would want or I think this would make sense and, you know, we, we can't really say this is what we've heard from people if they don't tell us that, so it was really good to be out there and hear some of the questions that people had and be able to answer those and I think that anybody who I spoke with and I, they would say, can I actually ask you something? Well, yes, that's what we're here for and that's the job and that's part of what we do and we enjoy that and appreciate that, so please do come to the meetings, please ask us the questions, you know, we will answer you. And Mike, you mentioned food situation, I wanted to mention, I don't know what other neighborhoods are doing this, but for the past, I think this is the fifth year we have done this in coordination with Joshua's Place. There will be Thanksgiving meal drives and if, if you don't have another neighborhood that's participating, please come to Revere's Run. It'll be Saturday, the 22nd and our drop-off will be from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There is a list, it'll be online or it's on Joshua's Place, usually on their page or feel free to email me if you need the shopping list, they have a specific list of items that they request for that, for those meals and one of the other things is the, like gift certificates for Kroger or you can make a cash donation or go online to Joshua's Place and make a donation there. Every year, there's a really good turnout of neighborhoods who are coming together to do that, but I did get an additional message this year saying, you know, are you participating, we're really, you know, we're expecting to have a lot more families involved, so everyone is welcome to do that, like I said, reach out to a neighborhood that's doing it, come to Revere's Run or just go to Joshua's Place and you can make your donations there.
So basically, you put your stuff on your front porch and they pick it up?
We're gonna have, so in, in our situation, we just meet in the cul-de-sac, we sit out there with like a collection spot and then people just come and bring everything down and then we will collect everything and we take it over to Joshua's Place. So it's things like, you know, rolls, cans of vegetables, they have a really specific list and then they take all those items, put them together and make meal kits. And instead of giving families a turkey, which can be hard to manage, they get a certificate to Kroger so that they can go and they can, you know, maybe they just want to get a rotisserie chicken or something like that that they can manage, but they can do that however they would like.
And then how are those meals distributed to the families?
So Joshua's Place, they, people, so I know, like, because my kids are in the Lebanon schools, I've seen messages from them, people can contact Joshua's Place if they need a meal and they, they have a list and so they take care of all the distribution of those.
Is it your cul-de-sac?
Uh huh.
That there?
Yeah, but like I said, there's many neighborhoods who are doing it, I'm not sure who all was involved, but we've, we've been helping to do that for five years now.
Nice, that's great. Another shout out to the city, the new signs, the new City of Lebanon signs that are going up gradually, those look great.
That is Rebecca Nelson.
Who is it?
Rebecca.
Rebecca, yeah, the toddler, kudos, they look great.
When is the, I know I saw a rendering of the championship plaque.
Yes.
Do we have an idea when those will be?
In soon, because it's been ordered.
Okay.
Yeah, actually I think we have them and I think we wanted to confirm, place them with the school district, so maybe they will check on that. I think that was the last, I just wanted to make sure we put them where they, where they're recommended.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Ms. Harper? Okay, I got a list tonight, what the heck? First thing, the Giving Tree is up.
Thank you.
Yes.
And it is full of cards, so if you make your way to City Hall, right back in, in Dan's domain, there's going to be a Christmas tree in the middle of the foyer there and you can, you can pick up those cards and those, each, each group of cards is a family and there will be kind of a detailed list of things that, that you can pick out for.
Yes, it's clothing, I know, like, new clothing and, yes, thank you, telling the sizes and kind of give you some ideas of what, what the children would like, so yes, thank you.
I have a question.
I'm just curious, is there like a dollar value that is kind of what generally?
No, it's, no, no, it's up to what the individual wants to do, yeah. Sometimes it'll be, you know, two children in a family and other times there's five, so, yes, so. But, yes, people have been very generous and I'm glad you mentioned it now, thank you, because there are good times when we sort of bumped up towards the end.
Right, right at the end.
Scrambling, yes, yeah.
On the, the topic of meals, so we're storing cards, they're at 41 North Broadway. Harmon Park on November 14th, from 12:30 to 1:30, they are going to be distributing groceries. And their donation hours are Wednesday through Friday, 1 to 6, and then Saturday, 10 to 6. So that'll be, so yeah, they're, they're giving those out on Friday from 12:30 to 1:30 if anybody would like to donate to that. And then every year I'm a part of the big turkey boil and I have currently 10,000 pounds, and I'm not even joking, of bacon grease that we're going to allocate to boil some turkeys. Not going to use it all, hopefully we can spread that out over a couple of years, but if you do need a meal, feel free, I, I don't, I don't know any other way to make it anonymous, but if you do need a meal and your, your family's in need, you can email, I think anyone on the board, but you can email me directly and I will make sure that that is tallied into what, what they'll be doing, both here and in Mason. And we will, we'll make sure to, to get that to you. Then on the 28th, we have our Christmas tree lighting and all of our Christmas festivities kick off. And one, one thing on there that is, is out of the ordinary is our French Run Trail Hike.
The following, yeah, that Friday.
That kind of kicks the, kicks the whole thing off. Which if you haven't been on the trail, that's a fantastic, fantastic trail to run or bike or hike. I've, I've done it a couple of times with, with my kids and they always, they always enjoy it. And then I was talking with someone earlier today and we were talking about the stage and I thought they had a really cool idea, she was like, I wish we could put together a program where all of the kids who are learning instruments could have an outlet to perform in front of the city.
Yeah, we, we'd love that.
And I was like, we could do like a Lebanon's Got Talent concept, I mean, we obviously wouldn't vote or anything, but I think it'd be a really cool showcase, maybe to, to use our stage, integrate with the chamber. We have tons of music places around town. Lots of lessons, I think it'd be a very, an interesting little Saturday night.
We had reached out earlier this year to a lot of the, the music studios, kind of planning that scene, hoping that they would take the ball from what they need. We as a city didn't want to be the judging of the talent.
Yeah.
And we're still, but yeah, the idea is outstanding, I think it's just needing, you know, kind of folks in that space to help organize it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll, I'll work on that.
Good deal.
Yeah. And then finally, congratulations to, to you guys on a race well, well-deserved and well-run. It's been a good, a good four years with you and I'm excited to continue our, continue our role together, so congratulations on, on your win. I think that's all I have. Motion to close the meeting? Oh, we have an executive session.
You have an executive session, Your Honor, if I could, I just want to give you a preview of some housekeeping things. So, the beginning of the term of office for the newly-elected members begins according to the Charter on the first Monday of December following the regular, regular municipal election. So according to my calendar, that's December 7th, that's the beginning of your term. The organizational meeting has to take place within five days after the beginning of the term, so it could be, you know, it could be Tuesday, the 8th, but it has to be at some point.
We have to have an organizational meeting where the mayor, vice mayor are elected. Now, since you're all returning councilpeople, we have oaths of office that are notarized and on file. But I felt bad because the last time, don't glare!
I'm not glaring, I'm just glad that we asked and it can be more special for them.
I felt bad, we usually didn't swear in the new newly-elected councilpeople if they were coming back because we already had those on, on file. If council would like to do that, I'd be more than happy to administer, you know, an oath for ceremonial purposes, that'd be fine. And then after that, mayor and vice mayor, we take nominations and then vote. So we're gonna, I know Scott put that on the agenda for that executive session, we'll talk about it, I just wanted councilpeople to be thinking about it, so I thought I would mention. And I, I do apologize, we hadn't done it.
It's okay, no, it's okay, we just didn't know.
Probably be a nice thing.
Yeah, yeah.
But December 7th is a Sunday this year.
So it'll be the night, the 10th?
I'm sorry, I've got 20, I've got the 26th.
And the only reason that is because Pearl Harbor was bombed on this Sunday, so it's like a federal bomb.
Seven be the night. Yeah, the 7th is Sunday, then, yeah, it would be the night, the council meeting for the night, you can have an organizational meeting incorporated into that meeting, but the, yeah, the term would start on, on the 8th.
Does that fall within the?
Yeah.
Yes, as long as it's within.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Sorry, I had my 26th.
Don't judge.
You know, the numbers on the calendar are really like this big, so it's really easy to miss them. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn the executive session to consider the purchase of property for public purposes, for the sale of property, a competitive bidding with premature disclosure of information would give unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest. That's 121, 2022, G2.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Thank you for joining us, we will see you next week.